I call the planning board for April 4, 2023, to order. First item on the agenda is continued business. The site plan for 6460 Montgomery Street.
Kevin, is this the one you want to start with?
That is the one that we want to start with, absolutely. So, good evening. We are back tonight to hopefully wrap this project up in front of you. At our last meeting, we had a few issues or things to add to the site plan. We've, I believe, we've addressed all those issues, one of which was dealing with the squail for any runoff that may be created as part of the hardscape and project in the backyard. So you'll notice along the north and east side of the property, if you were to zoom in on your P- yes, yes, yes. So there's a dash line depicting we will squail that will make that a depressed area in the lawn. It'll still be lawn. We'll be graded into it, and that will...
Let me bring up the PDF. It's easier to zoom in.
Oh, I thought that wasn't.
Well, it was, but it was in Google, and I can't zoom in on it.
So there's a dashed box, L-shaped box, that goes around through the landscaped area in the back. So we will grade that into the lawn and into the landscaping as an area to mitigate any runoff that may happen from the hardscape, from the roof, from the reduction of lawn area that we're creating. That was one area. A second point that we discussed last time was indicating that we're not going to have any access to the roof of that shading structure. So on the down, on the lower, on the notes on the right-hand side of the screen, on the lower note, so we've indicated that, that that's not a platform, it's not a deck, it's strictly a roof. No one should have access to that rooftop for whatever may, could happen up there. That's, the intent has been along that we're not using that. So that's how we handle that. The third issue that came up, or topic that we discussed again, was creating a condition for the approval. I wasn't sure. I think in my mind, there was talk about the board wanting to talk about the wording of that. We added a note on the lower, the center of the site plan. Keep going, keep going, keep going. All the way down, and back to the left. Need a laser pointer. Keep going to the left across the...
Yeah.
So we created a note that says, it's right there. "No source of steady sound which exceeds limits set forth by the Village of Rhinebeck zoning law, section 120-13, shall be permitted at any property line. Should any sound cause as a result of the proposed pool equipment violate this Village of Rhinebeck zoning law as stated in section 120-13, the homeowner shall be required to make efforts to remediate the sound pollution to become compliant within the legal sound festival limits." I don't know. That was our take of, I think, taking and taking the zoning law and applying it to this situation. I'm not sure if the board has thoughts, or if it's something that you need to sort of discuss them with yourselves, but I'd be curious to hear if that satisfies your, the concerns.
May I tell that to the board?
I think it's in the spirit of what we discussed last time.
Sure.
All, everything so far, actually, all three.
Okay.
And then there was the fourth, right? The fourth item was the rendering.
For the neighbor.
And I don't see, Judy, Judy's not here, right? So we did put together this rendering, which I believe is in your, is in the PDFs as well, and, let's see, probably, let's try that. You may just be able to also go through, you go through the PDF. Probably the last one. This is an older one. Go back to the first, I'm sorry, the, go back to your PDF list there. Which one was that? Was that?
Large perspective? Large perspective views? These are all, look at the dates on these. March 30.
This is still... I think it's in the... So all the way to the right side, or all the way to the bottom, that works. There it is. So that is the, Judy had taken a photo for us from her, I believe it was from her, outside her door, or maybe this is from the kitchen window, looking at the property. You'll notice the chimney for the fireplace, you'll see the roof of the pavilion structure, the proposed landscaping that we've been proposing all along. It's really a, I think it's a minor impact from her property.
So there are two fences, her fence and your?
The fence in the, right in front of us is her fence, and then you'll see our fence heading back. You know, the angle, she's further to the, to the, she's more behind the spa than David's house. So the angle that she's looking at is not a direct shot at his backyard, but more of an angle.
So right here would be closer to Platte?
Correct, correct. Platte's to the right, that's right.
This would be moving down towards Mulberry.
Correct, correct. So that dark building that your cursor's on right there is the shed storage building behind the spa and their parking lot, behind Haven. The fence that you see sort of heading away from the screen, that right there is our property line which heads out towards Montgomery Street.
So I think the question on the table was how high those trees should be so that they blocked the pavilion but didn't block the sunset view and the house?
You know, and touching upon that, there was some question about make them tall but not tall, not too tall.
Right.
You know, so that's a balance, and I think Judy would like them to be lower than what's depicted there. David, I think, would like them to be a little bit lower. I think Judy's concern, one of her concerns was the sort of sunset, the majestic picture that she had, that she showed everyone.
Right.
And that, none of this is going to interfere from her window of that view, that view shed a still to the right of David's house in this image, which is where she had that sunset shot.
So did you come up with a maturity height recommendation for those trees?
You know, I think that like six to eight, eight is... I think there are several bushes there already to the left that are eight feet already.
Yeah.
So I think that's probably an appropriate height.
Seems good to me. And, you know.
So those are the, I think, four topics, the four concerns that were addressed at the last meeting, and happy to hear what other questions or concerns the board might have.
Does anyone else have any more questions or concerns with all the questions that we asked answered, to everyone's satisfaction?
I just wanted a clarification. We're talking about a cedar fence there.
Yes.
It's not the vinyl.
Correct, vinyl is no longer cedar.
Because the vinyl still shows up in our packets for some reason.
Even on the newest, if you went back up to the...
I saw it on the site plan, it's cedar.
It's on there, it said cedar.
I know.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, yeah, absolutely, that's in there.
I know, it's clear in the minutes that it's cedar and in on the site plan it's cedar.
Yes, yes, that is our intent.
I think I'm good.
Satisfied? Have a motion to approve the site plan for 6460 Montgomery Street.
I'll move.
I'll second that. John Woo's and Michael's second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your patience on answering our questions.
You've come a long way.
Second item on the agenda is fresh tea, 63 East Mill Street.
Good evening. Is everybody in tonight? Tea fresh. This one, Paul, or the other one?
So this is for the 6384 Montgomery Street, Mill Street, I'm sorry, Mill Street location. And from what I understand, they have a variance in place that will allow for, Ryan, can you, is it six and a half square feet?
It's a total of 11 square feet.
11 square feet?
It's a combination of a hanging sign and if a wall sign is proposed.
So what we did here is we reduced the size of the hanging sign to allow for a building mounted sign, the combined square footage of which does not exceed the allowed square footage, the allowed square footage of that particular section of the building.
Well, we worked this out with Victoria last year.
You did, okay.
And so, enough science for all the stores to have. And many of the stores have that, a building mounted sign as well.
Right.
So there's room for both of them in a square footage that was allowed. Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, well, we're proposing both signs to be approved, although the client only wishes to go ahead with the hanging sign at this point. And I believe if we get approval for the building mounted sign or the wall, the wall sign as it were, that we have a year to do that before the permit expires for that? Is that correct, or?
Sign approval is under site plan, and site plan expires after 18 months.
18 months, okay. That makes sense. So I don't know if they're going to go ahead with the building sign, but they expressed interest in just doing the hanging sign at this point. But I figure it'd be easier for us to alter the hanging sign and the building sign together to allow them to have the sign on front of the building, you know, over the doorway, if they choose to in the future, within the span of 18 months, obviously. And so that everything, all, the combined sum of the square footage of those two elements is within code.
No lighting on the sign?
No lighting.
These two noted in the application, the first one, 27 by 34, is which one? The wall sign?
The 27 by 34 is the hanging sign.
The hanging sign.
And the 11 inch by 60 inch is the wall mounted sign.
Okay.
I think if you go to the drawing, it shows that 11 by 60 and the 27 by 34. And those go on an existing bracket that is consistent with all of the tenants have the same bracket, which is pretty uniform. Obviously, this will be above the minimum required height above the sidewalk.
And is soffit mounted? It says soffit mounted, it's like the other, the other...
It's essentially identical to the other, yeah, the other ones. I think in our, are there additional pages to this one, Brian? We go, you can see a couple of the other examples that we included in that. So that's where that one is, and it also matches the, some of the others. Is there anything else? Yeah, so that was the previous one. I don't know if that was compliant, but that's, and then we did Dr. Tom's Tonics and Cesar Rand Little, just as examples too, so that would be consistent with that, if they choose to go with that particular option.
So you'd like approval for both signs tonight?
I'd like approval for both signs, and they'll probably opt only for the hanging sign at this point. If they choose to do that, they understand that within 18 months they can execute that option.
Anybody have any comments, questions?
Just checking the height above the sidewalk of the hanging sign.
It will meet that minimum requirement.
Seven feet two.
Yeah, I think, I'll just check.
I think it's seven to 11.
I think it's smaller than the prior sign, isn't it, as the coach?
I can tell you right now, the Coach Farm Gucci sign was a head knocker. It was, it was well below that.
Because your old letters was 36 high by 35 wide, the one that you submitted as part of this application, so this is smaller than that.
Are we talking about the, Paul? Yeah, okay, so that's from the variance?
Yes.
Yeah, that was, we did that evaluation at the time when the Coach Farm Gucci's sign was there, and was, it was clearly not compliant. I think I covered that with, with Ryan, that we had a particular client who asked for a sign, said they were going to install it themselves, didn't disclose the information, turned out being Village of Rhinebeck, so I, you know, there's some things, I try to control as much as we can within our office, but some things...
Well, this is a work that last year with Victoria.
Yeah, I know.
Which you helped, I believe, with that.
So that was all...
So they tackle, there's plenty of signs for all the stores to have. And so if everybody's happy, so he wants to make a motion to approve the fresh tea sign.
I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
And they're clearly aesthetic, and you can ignore them. I never recommend white backgrounds on signs. They don't read as clear, as dark brown or as with lighter lighting, but if you're going to have a white one, at least do a cream color rather than a white, white, because the white, white looks like paper in people's eyes, and so it looks like a temporary sign rather than something that has a little richness and color to it. So that's my recommendation, is that if you do white, do a little creamy white. And then secondly, the letters there are faded, and so they don't come off as crisp and visible from a distance as, it looks like you're looking through a little bit of a fog. So those are my suggestions. You can take them or leave them, and we can do the approval one way or the other.
Those are always John's suggestions, just trying to help you have a sign that's the most visible.
You're the sign guy.
If you have a client to make happy, I understand.
John, I 100% agree. I gave nine different options, some of them dark backgrounds and cream colored back. Everything suggested, I provided to the client.
Okay.
They selected this one. What I can do, just as a, because I don't believe that they're that particular about the background color, I can do a slightly warmer ivory color, if you feel like that would...
We're just trying to help.
No, hey, look, my, my standpoint, I'm all for the aesthetics, I do the best that I can.
I know.
I really do. I, you can lead a horse to water.
Well, you could just say the planning board suggested this, and if she wants to, she can.
I think, I think Dennis and, I think he'd be willing to accept that, so.
Whatever, it's a nice enough sign.
Yeah. I do agree with you with the white trim of the building, you know, I think there's some continuity with the white, but I do, I do believe that a slightly off-white is always a better option. And many, many options were provided, however, none of those were selected, but I can, I will certainly go to the well one more time and suggest them.
So John made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion, Jeff.
Jeff, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck, I love you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Will they be open, or are they obviously, all right?
I think they're open, right?
My granddaughter was there, yes? I'll have to check it out.
You should.
Fresh.
The next item on the agenda is 25 Mulberry Street, amendment to the current final site plan approval.
Would you guys like to sit up where we can see you and...
Talk to us?
And record you? Is this PDF all of what you're going to show us?
Yes. So we're not changing the, oh, sorry, typo.
Design.
We're not changing the footprint of the house at all, but what we're doing for a few reasons, one, as you know, we've been sitting on these plans for two years, and so as you sit on plans, you come up with ideas.
Dangerous.
Super dangerous, but also with the cost of construction from original idea to today, some decisions had to be made. And what we did is we kept the footprint the same, but pulled the second floor back by four feet. So this was the, so what I did here for this PowerPoint is 2021 design that you approved in 2021, and then the 2023 changes. So the footprint of the addition is exactly the same, so the site plan has not changed, but you can see that the second floor has pulled back. So instead of having the, the big chimney, it now is pulled back by four feet, and it has that little Juliet balcony that goes across the entire back of the house. We also, so we took out the chimney, we also added a wood stove on the first floor in that little area, so that's that little wood stove pipe there. And then because we lost the two windows facing east, south, south, we added a skylight. So otherwise, and we sort of changed around the front, I mean, the windows and the door in the back. So on the left is the original house, and on the back on the right is the addition. Now on the right is the original, and on the left is the addition. This is the north view. So the first floor remains the same, except we just swapped the door in the back with its window, and then we rearranged the windows up on the second floor to accommodate how we had to change the rooms up there to pull the, to pull the space back.
And none of it will be visible from the roof?
None of it will be visible from the roof. You might be able to see it from, like, over neighbors' fences from Livingston Street, but, and Michael, I made sure to add the original, it's, it's not in the 2021 design, but the original 20, like, that chimney exists in the 2023 design, the one in the middle of the, that one.
That one.
Yeah, that's an existing chimney.
And so this door here is exactly this door here?
Yep.
But the space that you've gained by removing this fireplace thing here, you've added, you shifted this window over a little, actually, one window up here instead of the two.
Yeah.
Right.
Another one here, and here's your Juliet porch.
Yeah.
Coming off the back.
Yeah, and you can see that from the last slide, which is right there. So 2021 on the left, and then 2023 on the right.
Nice.
Yeah.
Looks nice.
Yeah, we actually think it looks actually a lot...
Again, this is that existing chimney.
Existing.
Yeah, that's an existing chimney.
Okay.
So the stove, the wood fire stove is, stove pipe is new.
Front looks identical.
Exactly the same. The only thing, it is exactly the same as what you approved in 2021, and it is exactly the same as what is happening right now with the house, except obviously for the port crochere on the left, and then you agreed with bringing the front door back to its original double door instead of a single door, with a silly little window on the side.
There's a metal pipe in the roof now, or at least it looks to be, unless I'm seeing something from the house in front of you, is that?
There is. I don't know what that is.
Okay.
The current boiler, so there's a, there's a chimney in the middle, there's an existing chimney. Yeah, that's like, probably like right here.
Yeah.
That the boiler currently uses, so I don't know what that other little, it's like, oh, we have a wood fire, sorry. In the part of the house that looks like a single wide that's been slapped on the side of the house.
On the north side.
On the north side, there's a wood fire.
There's a little wood stove.
There's a little wood stove.
Okay, so that goes away.
That goes away.
Yeah, I think the only comment I would have with respect to the chimney pipe, well, too, is, is one, just judging from where the skylight is next to it, suggests it's pretty far down the roof, so it's going to be fairly tall, and it's going to be supported, so there's going to be some roof supports on that.
Okay.
And then just, secondly, because I could see the metal pipe, I was just hoping that maybe when you select the color for that, something other than the bright stainless steel, whether it gets powder coated, or it's done in black, or something that ties in with the roof a little better, it would be the one element that I think you would see poking up over the house next door.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't seem to warrant like a masonry, full masonry chimney on top, but just, it's going to stay up quite high, and the shiny pipe, it calls more attention than something that ties in with the roof colors a little bit more.
That's reasonable.
Our neighbor just did that, they did something with stainless steel around their chimney, and they just painted black.
Powder coating.
Powder coating works really well, and the stainless steel metal vest, as we've even done like a copper color and copper roofs, and it's pretty hard to distinguish if you go aged, but, you know, to the shingle color, the...
Because it has to be a couple of feet above the highest roof, so it's going to be visible from some places.
Right.
Be nice to make it plain.
Yeah, that side of the house...
Is very close to our neighbor.
Is very close to our neighbor, well, not very, it's probably about 20 feet from our neighbor, but yeah, we'll make sure that we do something.
Are those all the changes, or is there more?
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Anybody have any questions about the changes to the original site plan? Comments?
The only thing that I have is the skylights. I have four skylights on my older house, and I, at the beginning, thought that was going to be really nice, and then I found one, they don't last forever, I already had to replace two, and to keep them clean for me is difficult on the first story, this is on the third story, and you have a wood stove, and I know people who have, when I'm looking at the smoke coming out, if you've got a downdraft, that black smoke is going to go on your, your window, and I know how difficult it is for me to get the goose crap off of the first floor. On the third floor, you'll be inside looking up and going, oh God. It's just, you can do what you want, but I'm just...
It's a good caution.
My experience.
Okay.
Thank you. We're actually, there's a set of skylights in the front half of the house that we're removing, so, yeah.
Would you think about putting it on the north side rather than the south side?
The skylight?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know which room would affect them.
I don't know.
It could.
I think it could.
It, yeah, I mean, the room, the room that it's over goes to...
Is the master bedroom.
Goes to full width.
Because I have a skylight on the south side, and I always wish it was on the north side, because in the summer, it just...
It's relentless.
Puts a lot of heat into a room.
All right, yeah.
And in the winter, because the sun is down, it doesn't really add that much.
Doesn't matter.
So I always thought if you really want just light, put it on the north side would be better, you wouldn't get that summer sun.
All right.
So you can think about that.
Yeah. Do we need to make that decision tonight?
I want to put a skylight on the north side of my kitchen, and, you know, they don't even notice it up there, except when it snows and it, there's, there's no light coming, you say, wow, it's dark in this.
It's dark in here.
Right, yeah.
I need the skylight back, and you wait for the sun to come out and melt it off, and I don't know how long, it's been there 20 years, but 10 years ago I had the roof replaced, and I said to the guy, flash the crap out of it, so you really, you know, reseal the whole thing when you put the roof down, so hopefully it lasts a little longer.
Okay.
That's a good suggestion. So everybody's fine with it?
Yep.
Have motion to approve the amended site plan for 25 Mulberry Street. I'll make that motion. We have a second?
I'll second, Darren.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Look, I think you've found some of the good ones.
You have the right to put the skylight on the north or south side.
Thank you.
We'll make a note.
I appreciate that. And yes, we're starting work, we think, next week, not on the, on the garage.
Excellent, good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Last item on the agenda is 86 East Mulberry Street, installation of a new HVAC mini foot system and proposed window replacement.
Hello.
Good evening.
This is the, David, that you took?
Yeah.
It's David's.
David Miller.
David Miller.
Oh, you took...
You have a lot of photos in your submission, too. Let's take a look.
I'm sorry, we have what?
Yeah, there's a lot of photos in the submission.
Oh.
A lot of photos. Where shall we start?
Are those the... No, I don't think so. Those aren't the photographs of other houses with... Oh, okay.
Okay, and this would be what?
That's the historic register stuff.
Okay.
1867.
Some more photos. This is... So this is the context with the immediate neighbor's house. In fact, the ones that are installed are sitting right here, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. Is this stuff that you had, or was this submitted?
It's a combination of both.
Ah, okay.
They must have been from the earlier meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so we had it on file. So this is a new photo here. This is what's happened so far.
That's where it is today, yes.
And that's the... Whose driveway is that? Is that your driveway?
No, that's the yellow house. Yeah, the yellow house.
Terry Gibson's old house.
That's correct.
Okay. So I just... Well, there's two parts to this. One is the HVAC issue, and the other is the windows?
Right.
As far as the HVAC is concerned, that's looking pretty sore, especially to the... In fact, that one shot, for any of the pedestrians walking down the street, would see.
We had proposed a screen.
Yeah, they gave us several options.
Yeah.
There was a truck parked there, but that's the... I knew that runs up there. I'd like to try to screen some evergreen screening. We try to block many splits. For years, I've been afraid that solar panels would ruin the historic buildings. It turns out that mini splits have explored way beyond solar panels ever being built. And some people are understanding it's a historic building, and they're doing a gut renovation, it's easy. They put the mini splits in the backyard, and they run the pipes through the walls. If they're doing a retrofit to existing building, it's harder to figure out how to get this stuff in without, you know, making it too viewable for the street and for the live.
Initially, I wanted to have the line sets installed on the inside. The technician at the time told me that he couldn't get them in there very well, because we kept the bricks, the brick inside the wall. That wasn't taken out. So that just happened very quickly. They had eight guys there and five trucks. All that work was done in about six hours.
So these... You're proposing some kind of screening, like evergreens there to sort of hide that, and that'll be covered and hopefully painted the same color as the house?
Yes. The condensers would be screened with, if we're saying it would be in our body of some sort, we had submitted a wooden fence, you know, or something that would obscure them from certainly from pedestrians. The line sets use a plastic clip that goes over that. So they're entirely encased with a smooth surface. And yes, that can be painted to match the side of the coloring of the house when the house gets painted.
What kind of line do you think it is?
What's the proposal? Try that.
What's the windows?
Those lines on somebody's other side?
The lines are on the east side. Otherwise, they're all the way up to the front of the building.
Elevations.
Yes.
That's correct.
That's picture number two that I took.
I'm trying to remember what I did there.
On the west side, we have them come down, and then they go horizontal. And then on the east, they go straight down. They go into the basement.
They both go to cross the joists.
That's kind of a... Mini split proposal.
And I think one of the things that we're reacting to here is that, you know, several times, things have come up in fences, mini splits, where the homeowner has good intentions, and sometimes the contractor comes in and doesn't install one, two, three. And they're not exactly what I was intending for. And I think a part of what we're wrestling with is how to regulate that, you know, when they're good intention, and then all of a sudden, someone does something, you know, it wasn't necessarily malicious on the part of the homeowner, but I think part of this is understanding, and part of this is trying to figure out a way forward.
So I guess these are the options for the west side. Either some fencing with some evergreens.
Or, I think it's or evergreens.
Yeah, not both.
It was intended that you pick one that you like.
Right.
How much space is there, though? Because there's a 14-inch clearance on the front of these units. Is there enough space to do evergreens that can fill out?
That's... I don't know. I mean, they... The trees grow, and you know, I...
So this is your walk here, and a little bit of green... So the driveway is like right here, right? Just a foot or so off this walk?
That's correct.
And where is the property line? Is the property line...
It is approximately...
Close to the driveway?
The driveway.
It's at the neighbor's driveway?
To the best of my knowledge. Is that correct?
I'm pretty sure so.
Question, have you spoken with the neighbor and asked them if they have a preference on this?
They were supposed to write a letter to you, and they didn't. Yeah, well...
It probably would have been better, some of the first two that had hose in them, which would give the... This one, this one, had hose in them to give the units a chance to breathe than a solid fence.
Yeah, a solid fence.
That's not good. One of these two would be the best choice. And I think that would be it. It wouldn't be something which you'd have to be trimming, trimming. It might start growing into the unit, getting too close.
Absolutely.
Probably a fence is like the first two with hose in it would probably be the best. Is that what the neighbor was thinking, or he didn't write a letter?
I didn't speak to the neighbor, Lisa did. And the neighbor was supposed to write a letter, and apparently, they didn't. But they have no objections to any of this. Everything's fine.
I agree that the... My feeling is the fencing is a more sure bet in terms of screening. And you want to have lattice or spacing, so that you get air circulation.
And we can also obscure it from the side as well, walking down the sidewalk, you know? So it's like a U shape.
Right.
Like this lattice-type fence, John?
I think the lattice is more attractive, even though...
Than the slats here.
And the horizontal slats, others never look right in the village for some reason, even though they're somewhat consistent with the siding, but...
Yeah, they're really modern.
It's sort of a modern fence.
Higher from all sides, and it would give the units a chance to breathe.
Yeah. And I think just like this, you could put a few smaller plants in front of it, so that it sort of blends in.
They can grow back towards the fence.
So I think that's the best solution myself.
I do, too.
And do you think it should be painted the same color?
I... Can we see the porch? I think there might be some inspiration in the skirting on the porch that we can look at, because it... I'm in agreement, I think there's not quite enough room to get evergreens there that could grow and not smother out the units or the driveway.
They would certainly smother out the walkway.
Right. So the... I definitely am liking the lattice concept. I'm hoping we could find inspiration on the skirt board of the house or something. Maybe an element we can shift over there and suggest around these units.
I believe it is lattice. You can't see it there because of...
Yeah, the intention was to make it the same color as the house.
Because it would feel maybe just less gimmicky and applying... An element that stayed low and captured the ground.
Behind those bushes, you could see...
Yeah, I feel like they're... Something in that palette of the lower portion of the house.
Horizontally vertical as opposed to diagonal.
Yeah. The diagonal tends to be a little more homey, bow-oriented these days than historic-looking.
And if it's not pressure-treated, then you could paint it right away. Not the way here.
Well, I know that we can have a painted wood. Like a stand or something. A painted lattice, it peels, and then it's a maintenance nightmare.
Painting plastic, you mean? You mean painting plastic?
No, I mean painting wood.
Painting wood?
Yeah.
You could spray it with stain, like have it stained.
Yes, a solid stain.
Solid as well.
Yeah.
That doesn't peel, that's going to protect the wood.
Yeah.
So we're all agreed on...
On the east side, on the west side. The east side has that pipe running up to the top of the building, and some of the boy brothers had some concerns about that. That's why I took pictures of it, too.
The east has the...
Somewhere else, number two.
Yeah, it's something there.
Number two.
And that is the line set housing.
Number two. There's a truck parked in the way it was working, but you can see it goes all the way up to the top.
It does, the air handler is up in the attic.
It's up at the top of the attic.
And that's how we got there. And if that's painted the same color and covered, I can't remember the propriety.
I think you have to live with that line height.
Line height?
That's what we're doing all the time, just painting them.
Yep.
The color of the house, trying to get it as far back as possible, but it was not possible.
They're like utility lines. They look awful when you first look at them, but then you learn to not look at them. They sort of blend in.
Yeah.
It's only when someone's doing, like the woman on South Street, that was going to renovate the whole house. I said, you've got a garage on one side you can run pipes through. You're renovating a bathroom on the left side. You can certainly run pipes through the walls. If you're doing that, you can have more, you know... Like Lydia's renovating, ripping open walls and stuff. You could put pipes inside, but if you're not, then it's impossible.
And well, your place tractor is unfortunate, too, because it's not reading like a cornerboard. It's not reading like a dance bout. It's reading just as this vertical element across all these horizontal lines, so...
Yeah.
Even painted, it's going to be a little bit visible.
Yes, it will, you will see that.
Yeah, but it certainly looks better than the crinkled black hose. Oh, for sure. The line height's a big improvement.
I parked across the street at the town hall. You can look at what they've done. They've just run the black hose. It's decomposing from the ultraviolet light. You know, the insulation that goes around the line set. These are, you know, will be protected. The other thing, I have run line sets inside walls, and the gentleman that's doing this job didn't want to do it, because if it does rupture, or something does happen to it, you have to, you know, gut that section of wall and then replace the line set. These are very easy to maintain should something happen.
Yeah.
It's better than windows, but it's hanging out on the side of the building.
So the idea is you're going to put the covers on the line sets and paint them the same as the exterior to diminish... You can't eliminate, but you could diminish the impact that you're...
That's what the best previous people have tried to blend them in.
Yes.
You could try to come over and up, but if you're doing it near the front, it's very, very difficult.
Yeah, they did go through the basement to get to that one air handler, and then they brought it up the other side of the building. I don't know why they didn't bring it up this side of the building. That would have been a possibility, but that's not what they did.
And a question about the... If you're using the lattice fence section instead of planting... Again, this is very close. This looks like the... So in other words, the property line is right here. Is that fence going to be right on the edge of your walk here, so that it's a good, you know, 16 inches away from the fans here?
Approximately, yes.
Not right up against the driveway of your neighbor?
Oh, no. No, I think it... I believe it shows it. I think there's a drawing there.
I just want to do any of those drawings.
I believe it shows it, so... A foot to... Since we're doing a lattice, there isn't going to be starving for air, which you need. So they certainly can be closer. And there's plenty of room to do that. I think if you go back a couple of slides, you'll see. It's quite... Probably stop there. All right, so we can easily come off there.
Maintain the wall.
And around the corner, so we obscure the end on that side. And still, there's plenty of air in my estimation.
So we have you with the base split solution.
So let's do a motion, Cher, that is fresh in our minds.
Is one at a time?
Yes, let's... So it's fresh in our minds right now.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the mini split design.
I'll do a motion for a lattice screening fence with a solid dark stain.
Taken... Yeah, a solid dark stain pulling from some element on the house.
Covers that match the paint of the house.
With some landscaping around it.
Some landscaping around it.
And then covers that match... Covered the hosing and painted the same color as the house.
Put the line height on and painted the house color.
Yeah.
Yes.
We have a second to talk about.
I'll second that, yeah.
Do you have seconds, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, what do you want to do with the windows?
Okay, because one statement about painting the intention, depending on the budget, is going to be repaint the house possibly next year. We can paint it the same color of the house now, and then everything has changed. The color will not be that color. I don't know what the color is.
Well, it's the same color as the house.
Yes. Correct. But there's going to be a window where that house is not going to be painted the new color. So can we wait till the house is painted to do it?
Yeah.
I don't want to piss anybody off here.
No, no, it's okay. It's okay. We're not...
My understanding.
We're just trying to protect the...
You mean, you have to put the line set covers on, but not paint them yet?
I beg your pardon?
You mean, put the line set covers on, but not paint them yet?
Correct. Until we paint the entire house, which I'm saying is gonna be next year roughly.
Yes.
It's really about, it's about the month, you know.
So what do you want to do with the windows? Which windows? Do we have the plans for that?
Yeah, we submitted a man's number that had that.
Which ones?
And one thing that I wanted to say about these windows is that it's the Anderson four hundred series replacement window.
Not, not new construction, just to be clear.
They are not new construction. They're replica windows and they're the exact size of what is going on there now, utilizing the same.
Six over six?
That's correct. They are all six over six. Exactly like that pink house. What the windows are, they're called simulated divided lights. And what that means is that there are two panes of glass and in that is a grid. And then on top of that, the muttons are applied. So you have the same proportion of what is showing, shown in that picture. Whereas if you had an authentic divided light, because of the thickness of the glass, you end up making larger muttons and the proportions are nowhere near what that is. Don't be confused. The neighbors put in, you know, the grid in between two pieces of glass and, and that looks horrible, in my opinion. It doesn't look like it. But that is not a simulated divided light. That is a grill sandwiched.
And we like the glue to the window so it looks like it's a real divided light.
I would defy you to find the difference quite seriously. I mean, if they look that good, I'd have them in my house.
Well, the proportions are always not exactly what the historical are.
These are, well, because they can apply it without having to support the piece of glass, so it's, you know.
Better.
Yeah, and it's gonna look a lot better than those.
Yes.
I mean.
It's a shame though. What bothers me, you know, you know, I understand the need to insulate houses and, you know, bring things up to energy standards. This is the only one of the four sisters left that has the original windows in it.
That's correct.
And when you walk by and you see the, the glass, is the wavy glass that looks authentic. And no matter how, how well the Anderson windows work and how they, they don't have the wavy glass now.
It will not have the wavy glass.
So you've lost that sort of look.
It's gonna be float glass.
So I would suggest, and you can take it or leave it, is that you keep the ones on the front and do all the ones around the back. And just keep the wooden screens on the front, or storms on the front, which I don't think detract from the house at all. They're, they're good quality storms. That would be my solution, but I understand that's not as energy efficient as you can get and it's a pain in the ass. Paint them and whatever.
And also take them off and put them back on.
Yes.
The upper windows.
I do it every year. I know, it's a pain in the ass.
Yeah, boy. The downstairs, the downstairs windows there had that wooden storm. The upper windows had aluminum storms.
Well, on the front they have wooden and then on the sides they have aluminum.
Well, those are aluminum on the top. Is that correct, Ted?
I look like the wooden, they look just like the ones on the bottom.
I could be wrong, I don't think I am.
So anyway, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
But that way, at least you retain a visible from the sidewalk. Nobody can see the side windows nearly as clearly. You can get all the energy savings out of the side and back windows and eliminate the aluminum storms, which don't look so great. But still maintain the original glass on the front. That would be my compromise solution, but I'm, I'm not telling you that that's what you have to do.
I understand. Those windows are, and when you're standing in the road, may look charming, but they're in horrible shape. They're falling apart. You know, the, the parting rails are coming out and...
Yes, I know how old windows are. But anyway, that's what I'm, I'm not gonna keep my old windows. And it'd be nice if you could, as the last one of the five sisters, but I'm not gonna put my standards on you. It's, it's just a suggestion.
Thank you.
And I, I, when I moved in my house, they had an old sliding glass door and I put on, wasn't Anderson, but with real muttons on the outside and it looks good with divided lights and, so I know the quality is good.
Yeah, you won't get the, that was the manufacturing process, the way the glass was spun and it became uneven. Glass is liquid, but what you're seeing is not the glass set. It's the tendency to put that circular thing.
Now, I don't know if Anderson does this, but there is, are companies that do.
Wavy glass.
Wavy glass.
You can get that.
Um, but, um...
I don't think Anderson does.
I doubt it, yeah. But there's a guy on Livingston who did that for replacement windows. We said he couldn't do it because of the, you know, and he says, I'll put the wavy glass in. And it looks pretty good from the street.
Well, these are the most expensive windows they sell.
Yeah.
This is, that's a forty thousand dollar job to do those windows. That's the cost.
Yeah.
They do make less expensive versions of the same thing, but the customer, I'm pointing at him because he's the guy that writes the checks.
And we have allowed other people to do the same thing on other historic houses. It's just this one is closer to the sidewalk, so it's a little more evident. And it's one of the four sisters. It's the last one with the original glass and it's sort of like, eh.
It's closer to the sidewalk?
It's closer to the sidewalk than the other ones we've approved with replacement windows.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay.
There's, there's one little nuanced thing with Anderson that I've fallen victim to many times. So I'm familiar with a lot of brands. You know, TDLs are true divided lights. SDLs are simulated divided light, divided lights with spacer bars in the glass. But, and I confirmed this, I pulled it up on the internet. Anderson uses slightly different terminology. When they say SDL, there isn't a spacer bar in that window. You have to go to their full divided light window to get the spacer bar. So I just wanted to be clear that we were talking the full divided light, because they use a different terminology than the other brands. It requires that FDL to get the spacer bar in between the glass, so that you, you see the frame on the outside, the frame on the inside, and then the spacer bar in between. Otherwise, it's a void between the two grills. So we are talking FDL.
So you can look down and see through the two muttons?
Right.
No, this has that grid on the inside.
So these are the full divided light?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I saw them at Hobson Windows in the showroom.
Okay, so I saw an actual, right? I just wanted to, you know, be clear in the resolution that FDL with Anderson is the right terminology rather than SDL.
Sorry, Darren. So meaning, meaning that the, there will be exterior muttons that are dimensional, not flat.
Well, there's two things. In both simulated and full divided light, with Anderson, there's a frame on each side.
Yes.
But in simulated, with Anderson, there's no frame in between the glass. This is an indication that the glass is supported and it's more square.
You can also actually pull it out and stick your finger behind it.
In the, in the SDL, alright, so, right. So we're, we're looking towards the FDL, the full divided light here.
And will all the other windows be six over six around the house?
Yes. Except in the back. On the back elevation, those windows, we want to change out. And you can see there were horizontal windows there and then there, in the kitchen area, they're casement windows. They do not have any of that.
This, this is the rear?
Yeah, that's it. That's what we want to do right there.
Okay. No one can see that from the street or the side?
No, you can't unless you're sticking your nose over the top of the fence and that. You can't see that either, do you?
How's everybody feel? Okay? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the windows for eighty-six East Market Street?
I'll make a motion.
Jeff's second.
Jeff's second. Those in favor? Aye.
Full divided light.
Right, full.
Full divided light.
Full, full divided light replacement windows.
Right. Six over six on the sides, not the back.
It's not gonna happen because they're out of time. By all means, you can go to the Hobson Window Place and look at one.
Yeah.
And, you know, three dimensional. Now, I had a question on the board. It is my intention to put in a new electrical service. And then as a result of that, we'll be up into a two hundred amp service from a one hundred amp. So that means a two inch conduit or an SE cable will be coming down the side of the building. And I was told, that's not a problem. That's covered under my electrical permit. But I do see that as something that, you know, you're gonna see it. I mean, that is kind of...
We've never reviewed electric.
We've never, we've just had my electric changed over to two hundred amp, got the electric permit and they pretty much put it where it was. That's exactly what we're doing, right?
Some people spend the money to have a trench and come in the basement and put a pipe on the side of it, but that's a lot of money.
Bad and the sidewalk.
Big up the sidewalk and everything.
All right, I just wanna, I don't want this to cause stress.
Nope, nope.
I mean, that would be preferred, but it's not a lot.
That'd be preferred everywhere, but, you know.
And the bathroom fans?
That's part of...
Okay.
We don't like a bathroom.
Building Department did.
I beg your pardon?
Building Department? That's a question for Brian or Ken or something like that about the fans.
Oh, okay. Well, they're, technically they're required. I mean, if you have a window that works, you're gonna need it, but anyway. Okay.
Well, thank you, David, for your patience.
You know, thank you also for...
Well, we're just trying to preserve the integrity of these historic buildings as best we can in the twenty-first century, which is a challenge.
It is, and I appreciate what you're doing. I, I mean, it helps the equity I have in this town by not having it be trashed with, you know, maintaining the historical stuff.
We, we have to compromise, you know.
Yeah.
It's better than window units. Just think about all the buildings, so.
I appreciate it very much.
Good luck, David. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So any other agenda, have any comments? We don't have many minutes.
Uh, yes. Let's, uh, let's go back here.
Let's joke, that's a post went.
Oh, yes, forgot about my picture.
Now that you look at it.
Now that I look at that picture, I said, what the hell is that? I'd rather see it's not a dish, you know, than that thing, whatever that thing is.
It looks like, it looks like the, the sunlit top panel was separating a bit on the top from the other one and leaning out a little, you know.
Yeah, so you see that it's just a big pizza.
Well, that building was built around eighteen seventy. It's one of the oldest businesses we have. I have a picture of it being built. Guys laying the brick in eighteen seventy.
While you've got that picture up there and you're looking at the top, if you look down at the bottom, the yoga and the Pilates sign, I don't think they're seven feet off the ground. It's just something else.
So, alright, Brian can pick his shoes, whichever, what, what do you want me to start with? Start, start her.
The top.
Let's start with something easy. Let's start with something easy. As long as the board is comfortable, Paul and Timely Signs is willing to move that bracket for the yoga and the Pilates studio up the side of the building.
Good.
If the board is happy with that, then he can go forth and, and make the alterations. Now, we've looked at all planning and zoning documents for One East Market Street pre nine-one-one, whatever they came up with the address for this, and we can't find anything for this. Just recently, we found out that the previous clerk had a totally separate file for all the cell towers in the village as they changed. So we're talking about on this building, on Village Hall here, on the Duchess County Fairgrounds. Now, we need to locate that. We don't know where that is. We believe, we don't, we don't not know where it is. It's somewhere down in the archives because the majority of these are more than fifteen years old. So New York State law says anything that's older than fifteen years goes down into your archives. It doesn't have to stay in the department's office. So we believe this date's Nextel or Sprint, which is probably the early two thousands or late nineties. So obviously, we're more than fifteen years. We're twenty-plus years ago. So now the next safari is the archives and finding the correct box and where the folder is, so.
It would have been in the early two thousands, because I was on the board when the, the narrower version was approved. It was, I started on the board in two thousand one, I think.
So that's twenty-two years ago. So hopefully, it's within this separate cell tower file the previous clerk created for, as these antennas and co-locators and everything were starting to blossom in the village here.
But did we say that there was something up there before that just seems to have been changed?
Yes.
More recent?
It just came in.
It got taller.
We, we approved something that was narrow and not as tall.
It was supposed to look like a chimney.
Yeah, but do, do we know when this replacement structure was erected?
No, I just noticed it like two months ago.
I think it was about a year ago.
Yeah. It was more than that. It was more than, it was more than that when they added on to the antenna up there.
Well, the village had to approve the closing of the street for them to do it.
They needed a crane to get the new antennas up there on the original one that we believe Sprint or Nextel installed twenty-plus years ago.
I don't know what we could do about it at this date.
Because now it's owned by T-Mobile. Because T-Mobile left here, they took their antenna off and added antennas to there.
Well, I, it's, um...
Because as far as we can tell, the Shriver's had no, beyond some authorization letter, we can't find anything in the planning and zoning files that they became, they were the applicants for site plan for this. It looks like whoever the...
I seem to remember it was the Shriver's.
It was them with their name on it and then it's all filed in this, it's, it's, not in the planning and zoning files, because we've looked at everything, we've looked at when this was called sixty-four hundred Montgomery Street. That doesn't exist anymore because of nine-one-one. Now it's all One East, One East Market Street.
You know, I think the solution, you know, you're not gonna get rid of cell towers. The solution that we came up with in two thousand, whatever it was, was to put a cornice on it that had, not elaborate brackets, but had brackets and was painted green, so that it looked like, um...
It was part of that building.
It was part of that, like elevator shaft or something that was legitimate for the building, you know. And if that was done, in which they put a cornice on that and put a green color on it and pull it together so it actually looked like brick, I think it would look like an elevator shaft or a bulkhead on the roof and nobody would care about it. But the way it looks now just looks chintzy and, and your eye grabs it. Well, I would, I would say if we did that and if that was approved back in two thousand twelve or two or whatever if it was, they would have to do the same treatment even if they had launched it.
Once we can locate the minutes, we'll certainly, certainly do that. I don't know if potentially legal has to get involved because honestly, who, who do we hold accountable for this? I, I don't know if we can have, because are we gonna ask the Shriver's to put the bill on, on, on this? I, I don't think so. I mean, who, who is essentially held accountable?
The homeowners.
And how do you force them to come back to do this? It's not like we can say, alright, we're turning the power off and you can't have an antenna.
Send a letter and say that they, you know, that they have to abide by the previous site plan conditions, which was disguises to make this a stealth tower by making it look more like a bulkhead than a plywood box. And if we had the ammunition that that was approved back in two thousand four or whenever it was, we could send it to them. And my guess is that they might go on with it, because it's not a big deal to them.
Because just my recollection of when building permits are submitted for this antenna work, construction work, some co-locator, whatever the work is, you're dealing with like six different aid agencies. It's unbelievable how many hoops this kind of work goes through. Because I, I recall one time, the people that were applying were not even the people that were gonna do the work. There was a subcontractor that actually comes and does the actual, the actual work.
Why don't you get Miranda in a miner's helmet with a light instead of Jax to start digging?
As soon as I get Canary too.
Canary too.
I'll make sure.
Well, one question. Who's responsible for that structure?
T-Mobile.
Alright, so T-Mobile's responsible. I mean, if a big wind came and knocked the thing down, the department store owners aren't responsible. T-Mobile's responsible. Is that correct?
Probably the department store should have come to us with a site plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they're leasing it to T-Mobile. And they're the ownership who's really responsible for the property under village law.
Now, they're, they're gone. Are they leasing the store to some new people? They didn't sell the building.
No, they didn't sell the building.
They didn't sell the building. Okay. Well, see what you come up with. We'll talk about it next time. Anything else? Anybody suggestions?
Stickles is going out.
We had some serious problems with the last one.
Does anybody know anything besides? I hope you know rumors. I, I don't know the reasons why they're closing. I just hear rumors that people are trying to keep it going or somehow approach the Stickle family and find out if, like a group, keep it going. Like with Samuel's is a perfect example, or some other, you know, retail locations, you know, groups have come together and offered to run it and things, and things like that. That's the only thing that I...
Sure doesn't make very much money, but they own the building, so I think they have, you know, great expenses. But it's unfortunate because it's a landmark.
This is true.
I have pictures of the construction that Frank Asher took. It's a shame.
So I have another item. As you probably all have noticed, Terrapin is very close. Very close. They almost taste their new, their new pavilion. In the conditions of approval, so the parking agreement matter, that's been satisfied and settled. There are other conditions. Where is the board's mindset of keeping them to their landscape plan, to this signage? I think there's also an item in there, I don't know if, when Josh is gonna do it, about re-shingling with the natural cedar, the facade of the restaurant.
It's all in his plan. There's supposed to be a sign parking around the corner at the church. There's a bunch of different things.
So I guess what I'm asking is how strict does the board want to be? Because I can tell you Mr. Croner is very eager to get his certificate of occupancy for the pavilion.
Well, he should be able to do the landscaping. It's, you know, within a month, you can plant things. Within three weeks, you probably can plant things. So I think the landscaping should be part of the certificate of occupancy. I think they were proposed to have a sign. One of the conditions was to have a sign to let people know that they could park in the church parking lot. The other thing that really bothers me, and I don't remember this being on the site plan, but you can check, they put a chain link fence with plastic slats in it around the dumpster. they put a chain link fence with plastic slats in it around the dumpster. And I can't imagine we approved that.
No, you guys approved wood.
That's what I'm saying.
Wood.
Plastic slats in a chain link fence.
Is it new? Because I remember there being.
Brand new.
That really.
Brand new.
Yeah, just went up.
And what about Rachel's fan? Is she happy? Do we know?
I haven't heard or nothing that's been submitted since. And that was another condition that, you know, based on Justin's determination that the noise whichever fan up there makes does not exceed the decibel level allowed in the, in, in the village.
I stood out in the parking lot and I did not think the fan was objectionable. You can hear it in the parking lot, but it wasn't, it was a normal background hum.
Well, they replaced that.
It wasn't a barren noise or anything that would cause you to not sleep at night.
Didn't they replace it?
They replaced it, not the one that I thought they were. They didn't replace the wall unit. They replaced it, the ones up on the roof. The biggest one up on the roof. That's what I saw.
I think that was the one that Rachel was objective to. I mean.
That was the one that made.
Also the oldest one. I think that's been there since.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So that's been pretty well alleviated, I think. The, John's point, the, the, the only thing that I wouldn't, you know, hold their feet to the fire and say you can't open until you do the shingles. But everything else on there is not unreasonable to be done in a very short time.
A wooden dumpster, some landscaping and a sign that says parking in the church parking lot this way. Point to it, the dry cleaner.
Then there's, then there's items Justin has to discuss with, with Mr. Croner.
The suggestion was to replace the heater shingle.
Supposed to get rid of his catering trailers. I haven't been over there to look. I don't know if they're still there. But I mean, his parking lot originally was a mess, so we wanted it cleaned up and substantially.
I think the pavilion came out looking very nice.
It did. It was nice. It was a good, it was a good compromise and good design. We're trying to, like I said, it's 2023. We're trying to live in a 200-year-old village and it's, you know.
They originally had floodlights on the corners of the pavilion, but they took them off. So I don't know if they're coming back or if they were just temporary during construction or what. But that's the only other thing I would look for to make sure that the lighting is not.
I don't recall floodlights in the site plan.
No, we never would have approached that.
I think it might have been just construction related.
So Justin checked out everything and make sure, you know, they're.
Oh yes, we're not letting anything go.
And check the dumpster fence in particular.
Yep, I'll look at that.
Chain link with plastic ribbon through it.
I guess you probably all know, but just so everybody's on the same page. The variance for, for Solmers Drive was denied by the zoning board of appeals. So.
He's going to have to move the fence down?
The, Justin is at the moment drafting a notification letter to make them aware of what they need to do to bring the fence into compliance.
Which is, it's really not a difficult thing, just practically speaking. There's four screws in each of those panels. And then you just lower it.
But I had a little chat with Tim. I said, it's about time we started. He said, you need permission. You knew what you had to do. You didn't do it. Fix it. We've never said, this is the first instance where we said, go back and fix it. And we have to start, you know, catching the pirates and making them fix it. I didn't know. I didn't know there was a planning board. I didn't know there were building permits. You know, I'm sorry, you know.
Come on.
Well, the biggest thing that has been for the last couple of years and it's going to get worse is, is the mini splits.
The mini splits are the danger.
We heard that tonight, the same thing. The contractor came in, seven guys, in two days they were done and they didn't put in the walls like they were supposed to.
He submitted 65 pictures of mini splits around the village. And I said to Brian, how many got permits? He goes, maybe a quarter.
I mean.
First of all, the village is losing money and two, when these things are going up.
Right. How, how many, we can go back through those pictures and do retroactive.
There were pictures. It's an itemized list of addresses.
Great.
65 of them. He sent it.
Great. They just did all of our research for us. We can now go back and get retroactive permits on them.
Well, you know, Terrapin, has Terrapin gotten a, a permit for the mini splits on their north side of their building?
That was all a part of their, I want to say that's all a part of their, their one permit. But I mean, it's this balancing act. I mean, not to put you on the spot, Mike, but Mike is getting mini splits. But he did the right thing. He met with the contractor. He says, I want as many of these mini splits out of sight or behind my house. He made it clear to them. He just didn't give the contractor free rein of doing what they, what they want and, 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 you know, just not have a second thought about it. Which I'll have to say, from the traffic we get at our door, it's, Mike submitted the permit with all the information that he was asked to submit. Everyone else is just the contractor. It's the contractor, the GC showing, showing up with the, the homeowner doesn't want to get involved. And, you know, I can tell you, most GCs are not going to take the time.
When did the mechanical permit requirement come into, come into being?
Well, see, that's the other thing. There, there is a learning curve. There are some contractors that don't realize that when you take like a normal AC or heat pump system and you're changing it to a mini split, that you need a building per, per permit.
But when did we start to require a separate mechanical permit?
Well, that's just been since Ken has been hired. Previously, it was all on one permit application and just one permit that was signed had an itemized list or covered everything on it. And then sometimes in the course of construction, there were change orders, changing to a new HVAC system.
I think I saw it a couple of years ago when the Catholic Church came in with the proposal to put mini splits on either side of the entrance of the church and pipes right up on either side of the stained glass window or through the wall. We said, whose idea was that? Well, the contractor said it's the best way to do it. And then we, we said, no, and we made it, we made a deal to go, one would be behind the bell tower and one would be on the bushes on the left side. The front of the church, mini splits and pipes.
Well, and also you can get now, like you can get ductless systems that don't have 63 different pieces of equipment outside.
You can share one or two outdoor units to four or five heads.
Yeah, you can have like one system outside that like does its thing throughout like a spider inside. So I think also either contractors are doing a bad job of guiding the clients or something, but like there's no reason to have eight compression units outside because you can have eight things inside with one unit outside.
And I was talking about 55 South Street. That was like, I don't know how she did that.
Yeah.
Like that was insane.
I don't understand.
But those are the contractors most people are going to. I mean, this is the new thing, right? It's not solar, like you said before. It's, there's tax rebates, right? Incentives, if you do this, $3,500, $5,500. And here we are, Yellow Pages contractor that installs HVAC. We don't care where we put the line sets. We'll promise you line hide, which is what we saw, we're going to get tonight. We don't care where they go. And so I guess the question is in the mechanical permit review phase. You know, like these people were annoyed because they're, they're coming to us after the stuff is already installed and our hands were tied, but they had good intentions. And it seems like if we had, somebody had the ability to push back on them and question the location of the line hide for the line set, they probably would have gone in the interior walls, right? Like what I heard from that conversation was if there was somebody that said you can't put it outside, they would have made him take some chinking out and they would have went on the interior walls or at least went across the basement ceiling.
So this specific case is sort of a double whammy because they didn't even pull a building permit.
Got it.
They didn't even know. We caught them at the end of the day when they had everything in, in there, so.
And that's thanks to a man on the street.
But it's going to happen quite a bit.
Who lives on patrol every day to get the village.
This is a two-day install. This is where these guys are going to make their money. Two-day turn, just get in there, put them as quick as you can.
We caught another one on Oak, on Oak Street.
Next to the units, got to be behind it in that picture.
We caught another one on Oak Street. And the only reason we caught them on Oak Street is because the, whoever did the delivery left the units on the front, on the front porch. And we got a contact number and they submitted a permit application.
So what are the symptoms here? It sounds like a, a, a key symptom is that a lot of homeowners don't know any better.
Do you want us to send back an email?
The contractor and the contractor is going to come in, they're going to want to come in and go out in a day. Get their money and leave. Least resistance. So what, how would we mitigate that problem, that symptom? Would it be, because this is going to happen a lot more. It's going to accelerate.
Everyone's going to want one.
Would we, would the, would the village send out an email blast?
Sure.
Saying, you know, just.
FYI.
Here's a, here's a problem that we've been having if you're, so that, so that you know, if you are, it's good for you if you're contemplating energy efficiency, but please be aware that you must have a building permit to install mini splits.
And if you're in the historic district, you have to.
Oh yeah, and in the historic district, there will be.
When they submit a permit.
Few shed issues.
You know, they, they, they look at it and go, wait a minute, this one is historic building. And then Ryan will kick it to us. So if they submit the permit, people will look at it and tell, you know, do the right thing. We just got to get them to submit a permit.
Yeah, I think we can draft a letter because I think we're dealing with new owners from the pandemic.
Yes.
Yeah, we can also like, you know, ask the Hudson Valley pilot to put something out. You know, I mean, like we can, the village, the village can help with this. So like just send me some language and I'm happy to do what needs to be done with it. Absolutely.
Mechanical permits are pretty uncommon outside of cities. I'd be surprised if newer old homeowners would, might be surprised that they get that. But I guess the second.
Problem.
Right. The follow-on to what Jeff is saying, then, so when they come to the planning board and what they were saying, then where are our teeth to talk about these things and actually insist that they do them a certain way, right? So we want thoughtfulness in terms of locating the outdoor units as far back on the house. If not, hit the rear of the house as possible. We want screening of some sort with a reason, like reasonable screening tonight. Like the comment, we'll put it right up against the unit. It's a good one until they take it down because they tell us the unit froze off in a snowstorm because all the snow accumulated in there, right? So like real thoughtful sort of guidance for them based on what the unit requires. And then the line sets, right? The line set issue and also the disc.
Line sets are the big problem.
The line sets are the, and there are like seven or eight different ways to put them in the building. And there are five or six ways to put them out of the building that look a lot better. In fact, you know, oh, by the way, you can bury the line set and remote, locate your mini split outdoor units away from the building too.
Because you put it up solid, you know, next to a shed. Pipe or something, whatever these things go inside the wall, but there's no joints in it. It's not going to, it's going to last 100 years. It's not going to.
Yeah, I mean, people have, yeah, put.
Leaks are currently, like the joints done, if you run a 50-foot pipe up inside a wall and come out into the room, that's where the leak will happen, not in a wall.
And these things leak a hell of a lot less than like a central air unit does. It's just different gases and the braising is better and the lines are better these days. They're smaller, they're less prone to damage. But, you know, so there are many options. We can, we can encourage, right? Like remote them. Can, can we move them off the building, you know, so that they're less visible? That we can put them in, in this garden area.
On tethered, they, instead of going over the baseboard and then up to the thing, they'll go straight up and then across the building.
Right.
If they're not said, don't do that. And I don't understand, when you're buying a historic building for a lot of money, you should care about the way your house looks. I don't even understand.
But do we have any authority, like once they get here, how much of that can we actually say and insist on? Because this.
We have section 3339.
Right.
Subsection C. Any new construction or major modification or alteration to the exterior of a building, you guys have oversight and site plan. So until they prove criteria or anything within their site and site plan that's satisfactory for you guys, you got to tell them to go back, redesign, and we'll see you at, at the next meeting.
Okay.
Some, some might push back with major modifications.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, you're putting in a boil up, a little electrical panel. It's inside the building. Nobody can see that. Get a building permit and that's it. You're doing something that's visible.
You have the code enforcement officer for interpretation. So if someone argues against, then you interpret it as new, as new construction. The mini split wasn't there before you bought the house. You're putting in, it's brand new in the historic district. In the residential district, that gets a little bit tricky. I mean, unless it is in, within a setback, because really no mechanical should be in a setback. They have new variances. Then you guys have oversight there, so.
Believe it Brian or Ken or Justin, could say, you know, it would look better if you do it this way. I mean, they can, like, if they see it, they can say, look, you have a nice house here. Why do you want to do this to it? So if, but if they don't come, the contractor does the church, right up the front of the building through the stained glass windows. I mean, you know, it's.
Well, then, right, and then it's a Solmers Drive fence thing again. It's like, well, the contractor did it, you know.
Anyway, any other questions, comments, ideas?
The Thompson House. I wonder how that affects the hospital plans.
So rumor has it that they're going to turn that building into a dialysis center.
Which, which building?
Uh, so.
Thompson House.
Oh, the Thompson House.
Thompson House. So rumor has it, the hospital is going to turn it into a dialysis center. I'm sort of surprised a building that big is required for dialysis, but, you know, that's like the scuttlebutt going on at the firehouse.
Yeah, I was wondering if it might be the reason that they backed off the rezoning and the plans for addition. And saying, well, just get rid of the thing and then we'll move some of the private offices back in there and then we can have room in the hospital to put in more hospital beds, which is what they need.
I mean, that might also, yeah.
I think NuVance ran out of money. I was told the top two floors in Poughkeepsie were not finished because they ran out of money. They're empty. And that this project that we worked with Gary and everybody for like, John did brilliant designs. We went through four iterations. We had a brilliant plan. NuVance bought it and we never hurt the hospital again. And the ERs, there was an article in the paper, the ERs all over the whole state are a disaster.
Yeah, skilled nursing is a huge problem throughout the entire country. And then of course, there's the Astrom that is discontinuing resident, residential services, not daytime services. So they're, the only reason we know about this, we got Warn Act notifications. So for Thompson House, it's about 100 people and for the Astrom, it's about 60 people that they were laying off. So I don't know what that's going to mean for Astor House, for, for the Astrom either. Because most of that space I'm sure is being used by kids who live there.
So they're closing that down?
They're closing down the residential side of it. They're keeping the daily, the daily outpatient side of it. They're trying, I mean, there's a movement countrywide to get people with mental health concerns to be able to live at home, but.
They went to a big expense a few years ago to add that wing on because the state law required private rooms for kids. No more dormitories or even semi-private rooms. And they built all those rooms just for the residential kids. Times are ever changing.
Yeah.
Three-day hits on the village in one month.
Yeah, it all felt like a lot. We got both Warn Act notifications on the same day. It was just sort of like, oh.
What is a Warn Act notification?
Um, there's a New York State law, W A R N. It's an acronym that stands for something, but it's basically when you're doing mass layoffs, you have to notify and give lots of warning and all the rest of it. So it's, it's at least a month. It's anywhere from 30 to 90 days. Thompson House is, their goal is I think April 28th, but it's after they get all of the residents re, rehomed.
That was a shame because a friend of mine had a double knee replacement at the hospital that tickers. And he said, you can't come three times a week for physical therapy. I want you to go for two weeks in Thompson House. You can do it three or four times a day and you get back on your feet. And that was a great, it wasn't a nursing home, it was for rehab. And that was a brilliant. And he was hiking and riding his bike three months later because of the Thompson House.
Yep. I mean, back to someone who do it, I don't know about for a month, but I mean, the problem is that now we've just lost, how many beds? 100, both like rehab and long-term nursing in a community that has a significant older population. So it's, it's, it's a blow. It's a huge blow. Like a couple of members of the board are furious, you know, for multiple levels. I mean, like they, all the hospitals, you know, the hospital gets a lot of reduced loans, you know, riding on the county's loan schedule. And so, you know, the cost of what taxpayers have been providing for their, just their loans for, you know, 3% instead of 5%, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars a month. And then they close.
And they are expanding where they need. They need more beds. They need more ER space.
Right. I mean, like, you know, they may just be doing a balancing act of like, we need more of all of it and so we're. and so we're focusing over here, but.
So they just applied and got a building permit to redo their entire MRI suite inside. I think for six hundred thousand, I think that's what it was.
I remember.
Well, it's good they're investing at least because you worry about them closing.
Well, yeah, exactly, that's, that's, that's the big concern. I mean, and I had a nice conversation with um uh, the chairman of the planning, of the, of the plan, or the comp plan. You know, it's like, right, you know, Astrom, hospital, like, these are huge landowners also in this, in the village. And he was like, should we have just like a comp plan meeting where everybody does a breakout session? It's like, you guys think about the fairgrounds, you think about the hospital, you think about Astrom. And I was like, I don't think we need to go into panic mode about this. And also like the underlying zoning should be able to support if one of these big things goes out of business. That, okay, we then know how to handle it for the success of the village.
Well, the hospital is packed, but it doesn't necessarily mean they wouldn't close the hospital.
No, I mean, like, they have no allegiance up here to us, um, especially even less now that they're owned by a larger corporation. But um, you know, I, yeah, I, I.
Yeah, it just seems like after all the back and forth between the village and the hospital.
Yeah, they could have mentioned it.
They, they, there should have been some discussions that we're thinking about this, we can't announce it, please keep it quiet. But we want the village to know we're working the best we can to do this or whatever. These are our long-term plans. Instead, they, you know, you read about it in the uh, online.
The two new, the two new e-papers, which is great, I love those. And we have some news now.
Yeah, we were hearing the red up data, I guess, not too bad. But yeah, I, yeah, we didn't hear about any of it until it happened, just disappointing.
Is Aster going to expand or outpatient?
I would hope so, given the size of their campus, but I don't know.
When they came and got approval for their, for their residential, they had to come here and go through all that.
Yeah.
But then when they started to bring in from other places, we had no notification of that and I found out about what that was going on because there are people that were staying there, were escaping and.
Yeah, well, and that might be part of it. I mean, the firehouse and the police deal with this all the time. But, you know, the residential population there has been a problem, sort of, literally just escaping.
He's been having a nightmare with that for a long time.
You know, and that might be part of it for them is that it's just a massive logistical.
If they do bring that in, you know, they should be told, you need to come before the village, us and, you know, describing what you're doing, how many people work there, what are your hours and how many buses go in and out and, you know.
Because when they added that new wing, they added a park, a lower parking lot. We're okay now, we're off the street. And they are parked all the way down South Street and all the way down Route nine every day.
Still?
Yeah.
Well, maybe now they've just let off sixty people.
Yeah, because last part, it definitely got a little better.
Yeah, it was, it was horrible and it's pretty okay now.
Yeah, I, I.
South Street, definitely a lot on South Street still, but Route nine is.
Because they, because they got rid of.
Well, they started getting tickets on Route nine, that won't put the parking lot.
Good.
And then stop parking there.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? All's in favor, see you in two weeks.